Once you get past the bridge, once you get to Ninth Street, the rest of it's back to back. We surround it. So the party's doing it out there as well.
We're actually improving it a bit. Not gonna put in curb and gutter because it's really not that urban of an area yet, but putting in wider shoulders and new service.
You got eighteen years on that? Did you do that in ninety-eight?
That was done in about ninety-six. So we got close to twenty years. It was ninety-six or the first part of ninety-seven because I came on in ninety-seven. And with the new asphalt and stuff, we're expecting at least a twenty to twenty-five year service out of it. We'd like to get more. I originally wanted to take all the asphalt out and put on white topping, make it all concrete, but we don't have the funds for that. Be more than happy if anybody wanted to volunteer some municipal funds, but.
We got the shoulders to put that wedge in before they widen last time.
Yep.
You see the cracks.
Yep. And we're gonna do the same thing when we widen the paved shoulders a little bit on the west end.
What kind of timeline are you looking at out there?
Oh, we're gonna do that this summer. Yep, midsummer. We got another project going that's twelve coming out of Annabelle, so I gotta do this next week.
Jimmy, what's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Guy Coleman. I'm a county engineer.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Next time I'll bring a little wood and get a wood curving machine.
Okay, I don't see any problems with us on it.
I'll plug an improvement to me.
Can I entertain a motion then for the resolution to approve the county project?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion's been made for the resolution to approve the county project within minutes of corporate limits. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passed.
And get me that resolution as soon as you can.
I'll get it.
You go. Okay, thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, public forum.
Well, as far as to afford Fort Emory Northwest cash, and I apologize for the monster computer, but I didn't want to print about a hundred pages worth of documents to bring with tonight. I was told by Mr. Nordstrom and Mayor to speak during public forum, my concerns address the selection of the next city attorney. I did ask the city administrator Coleman for copies of the attorney proposal, and she was kind enough to email them to me. And I also have your comparison chart that's in your council packet as a member of the Dropbox of the city council. I come to you tonight as a licensed attorney to raise a few concerns over the very wide disparity that is presented in these plans, and simply to bring some things to mind that people who aren't licensed attorneys might not be aware of. First and foremost, retainers are usually use it or lose it. So for the firms that have proposed large retainers, if those funds are not used, and it appears that the city is hopefully budgeting less towards legal expenses next year than was spent this year, you won't get that money back unless the attorney's proposal specifically says that you will. A second thing is that some of the firms are including, excuse me, their online legal research capabilities in their costs, and that is important because the ones that are charging you three dollars a minute, I can assure you it's expensive incredibly quick. Because on average, you spend an hour or more researching online case log, unless they're close to a wall library and they feel like getting up and going to find a book. So that is something that you need to be aware of in evaluating these proposals. Also, one of the things that I found very interesting is unfortunately, the, well, the firms that are based in the cities seem to offer labor and employment law expertise as one of their things that they bring to the table. I don't know how much cash and expense on labor and employment law matters last year from an attorney perspective because given that we have a city attorney, that everything is all bundled into one. We can't break those out very specifically. But that is an area that gets expensive quick, as you know, given what you have been told by the lead cities and also the recommendations from our current city attorney. So I would ask when you evaluate these proposals, and it is kind of worth trying to slog your way through the long form as opposed to just the comparison chart because the devil is in the details when it comes to attorney for law. I would urge you to read those before you make a hard and fast decision just for your own benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public forum? Public hearing? Nothing. Uh, committee report. Library Board Committee.
Art Kipkast, Public Library Director. I come tonight with some good news and some bad news. I don't know what you want first, but Nancy's looking like. The good news is tomorrow at eleven o'clock, we'll be raising the dome, the membrane for the new library, the roof. The bad news is I won't be able to come and tell you about this again, hopefully. No, so tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock, I've invited everybody in the council. I've invited all the chamber and just about everybody I can think of to come and to observe this. KAA, Austin Rochester, has connected with me and they'll be here tomorrow. KIMT of Mason City will be here tomorrow to see that. The Byron Newspaper, the Post Bulletin, the DCI will be here tomorrow for this uprising, uprising, whatever you wanna call it. I've contacted the police department to notify them that this is happening also, just in case, you know, traffic control or something like. I'm hoping for traffic control. The work after the dome is inflated now, people driving by day in and day out to see what's happening. They probably won't see anything anymore because all the work from now on will be done inside the building. Just a refresher, the membrane is put up, the membrane that goes up will be the roof of the building. So everything is done, the concrete insulation is sprayed first, then the concrete is sprayed and rebar is put in, concrete sprayed, so on and so forth. At the top of the walls, it'll be nine inches, at the top of the dome, it'll be about four inches thick. So I made a walk through there today, and I was able to walk around it, and there's rebar stacks, a rebar this high all around. It's gotta go in that ceiling, and also the rebar for the floor when they get, when they complete the ceiling. There's one division left to bid on. We get bids on yet, and that's Division Nine, which is finishing, which is the framing and the sheetrocking. And I think we're meeting tomorrow morning, and the discussion will be on that, to start working on that, to get that ready to go in the building. That is all that I have for you tonight. I just wanted to give you that little update. Do you have any questions? Go ahead.
Did you talk to them about getting a schedule that they can?
Yes, I did, and we'll be working on that tomorrow. I'm sorry, I forgot. The last council meeting, I was approached by a councilman asking, you know, what's the scheduled closing or the dates of what's happening? And we don't have anything, but we're gonna work on that tomorrow to try to nail down the finishing time for that. You bet.
Weather permitting, it can be windy?
No, it's not supposed to be windy tomorrow, not like it was today. If it's half of what it was today, it will still be okay. Because that's why they're going tomorrow instead of today. They had originally scheduled for today, but because of the forecast of the winds, they decided not to. Okay?
I think instruction manager is videotaping as well, so it'll be available online.
Right, thank you. And also, we put this raising of the dome on Facebook, on the website, the library's Facebook, library's website, the city's website. That information is in there. And I did do a four-minute, or four-slide video, and I drew all the arrows and made comments, text comments, on the pictures that we just put on the library, so they know what things look like. Instead of just having a picture, there's been some diagrams also to notify them what's going on.
Any other things?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the library. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Art.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, the ninety-minute parking.
Late last year, you were approached by a downtown businessman who requested that the council consider establishing ninety-minute parking areas downtown. I was asked to contact our Public Works and Police Departments and Planning Commission to see what their recommendations would be. Public Works was not in favor of the proposal. Police Department is not in favor of the proposal. The Community Development Department is not in favor of the proposal. And the Planning Commission discussed it at their January meeting, and their recommendation was not to go ahead with it at this time. The primary feelings were it's gonna be a tough one to enforce. It is also, in every time we've looked at a parking in our downtown, it doesn't appear to be a lack of parking. It's more the location that is the issue. People will, for some reason, they'll walk half a mile in a lot of parking lots. They won't walk half a block in the downtown center, just the way people are. So the recommendations were not to go ahead at this point, but it's the council decision.
Any discussion on this?
Myself, I guess I kind of agree with the planning and selling guy.
Yeah, I do too, and what Chris said too, as soon as they asked for it, you know, can I have some too? Where are we gonna stop it if we give it to one?
I didn't ask for it.
That night, you didn't say that?
No, I said we should discuss it, because I think it's okay if I speak. Let me ask a question. I, I, there's no way you're gonna be able to force it. I think what we could do maybe as a city, or we tried downtown, we tell all our tenants, the employees and the business owners are the ones who plug up Main Street for the clients. We got business owners that'll park right in front of their door all day long. And then the clients have to come park two blocks away and walk. If all the business owners and employees would park off the street, or the people that live in the apartments upstairs would park off the street, I, the majority of your problem solved. But when you get, we have nine tenants, twenty-some people working there all day, and all of a sudden there's a cold windy day, everybody wants to park close, there's fifteen cars parked on Main Street, and they're there all day. So we've done a, we drive, we've talked to some other business owners who just don't care. They said we're parking here, it doesn't matter. It is what it is, can't make a move. But I think if there was just some direction as far as you want downtown to be inviting its customers to come shop and use the services, it's just.
Maybe the Chamber of Commerce should get involved in it.
Yeah, it's just have to be self-policing. There's no, you won't be able, I mean, who's gonna start at ninety-minute clock and say you can park there and not just?
Okay.
You'd have quite an expense trying to control it.
All right, then we'll move on to the new business, authorization to list and sell a digger.
So the new digger has arrived, and Charlie will need approval to go ahead and determine what it should sell for and get it listed.
Good. Any other discussion on that? What year is Bill?
I'm sorry.
What year is the old one?
Ninety-three, I believe.
Buyer?
I'm just looking at the truck paper thing.
Yeah.
Prices of them.
Okay.
Very few to compare with that.
Okay.
It seemed to hold that ten grand price in.
What we can get for it. Um, so then can I entertain a motion and authorize a list and sell the digger?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, the authorization of list and sell the digger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passed. Next up is lease agreement with Peoples Electric Co-op.
Peoples Electric Co-op does keep a truck in Capson, and their current location was not ideal for them. It didn't allow them any locker space or way to keep some of their supplies on site. So they did approach the city about providing them with a place to park their bucket truck, keep some equipment. And it turns out we could even provide them with some lockers in the north building at the Public Works facility. Right now, they pay five hundred dollars a month. They're hoping to do a one-year lease and perhaps get that down to four fifty a month, workspace. And Troy with Peoples Electric Cooperative has worked with Todd, and so they're both comfortable with what space is available and how it would be accessed, and that information is spelled out in the lease agreement, which has been reviewed by your attorney.
Any discussion? I talked to Charlie and Todd myself today, and they were both, you know, that's a spot that we don't use. Get four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Might as well take it.
Is it renewable every year or do they have to come back every year and we discuss it?
I think at the end of at least the first year, yeah.
Annual lease.
Yeah, and at the end of the first year, we certainly would want to have a discussion about how it works for everybody.
Okay, then can I entertain a motion for the lease agreement?
I'll make motion. Sorry.
Okay, motion's been made for the lease agreement with Peoples Electric Co-op. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passed. Next up, service assured program for water and sewer.
I'll let Dan take it from here.
Oh, I was just checking around, you know, it wasn't too long ago we had somebody's water main break. RPU does a program where it's like a dollar ninety-nine a month, where you can pay in. If your water main breaks, they cover it. I know they've got.
Is that the main or the service?
Is it the service?
It's a service from your home to the.
So when that breaks, which we've had, you know, that can happen, it's a way for people to, it can cost up to two thousand dollars for people to fix it. So we're just looking at a way to save people some money in the loaner. And if we get, we got a lot of old pipes installed. And I think Rochester's got like twenty-six percent of their people doing it, which brings in enough in theirs to cover most of their costs. Some years they have very little, depends on the weather. Just another service that we could look at providing. Still getting a lot of old pipes.
But they have service for, it's a dollar ninety-nine for each service if you wanna add it, like add for your sewer, your water, and your electric. So you'd have three separate monthly bills, depending upon twenty-one, have covered or all.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's no different than a service plan for your appliances or.
But if we did something like that, you'd definitely have to take a look at how many, is there, how many, what percent did you say they had?
They had twenty-six percent, I think, of that.
I mean, so we'd almost have to look at some sorts, give somebody to crunch the numbers. If we can only get twenty-six percent of the houses here, we could lose that pretty quick in one or two.
But, you know, and then that's something you could look at changing the price too.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If it's something that, you definitely have to crunch some numbers. Nancy?
Yeah, yeah, if, you know, if you charge twenty-five bucks, you know, a month, I mean, if somebody had an accident, they'd need to be on it for six years to net out or six and a half, so. So, yeah, there's some investigation.
Well, maybe you guys, you know, talk to someone from Rochester and just see how they're, you know, they charge for each separate thing and see how it works. All right.
Does. Well, Rochester does, they're all digging on Rochester, on their water, so, and the electric just, so, right. There'd definitely be a difference there.
Especially if we'd be someone, someone to do the work through us, right?
Yeah, especially at winter time right now. I mean, most of these excavators will, once they fire that excavator up in the lot, they're filling from that time.
Yep.
They gotta get that taken warmed up to get her up on the trailer and. Like I said, it's just something that obviously would have to look at numbers wise.
Yeah.
Entertain it now, see what comes up.
No, thank you.
But it's just another thing to look into, just in case.
Sure.
Nick, do you have some?
Rochester subs all their service leaks out to, I think Scott does most of them. They're, RP, you guys only dig in the road.
Bad stuff back to big dog.
Yeah. When I worked, well, when I worked over at Scott's, we did all the service leaks for them those two years I was there.
Maybe you wanna just lead off of the main stuff.
And then.
I know they don't like working behind the curve.
No, there was, their rates were six dollars a month for all three of their services, for the sewer, the water, and the electric. Okay.
All right. Um, next up, set public hearing for vacation easement.
This is another one of those several steps to the dance process. At the next meeting, the Planning and Planning Commission will be holding a public hearing, and hopefully taking action regarding a minor subdivision in the southeast part of town for A and A Electric. He is seeking, he's got three lots. Is, where his building sits is the westernmost lot. He's got two more going to the east. What he wants to do is combine those three into one lot so that he can expand his building and his business without crossing property lines. Obviously, if you look at the map that's in your packet, if it combines those into one lot, we don't need the easements going between the two blocks, the elements of between the two blocks. So that's, those are the vacations that we're talking about. Normally, as we've discussed several times in the past, we don't generally recommend giving up land that we've already got. However, this will facilitate the expansion of the building and the business. They're not used now, and because of the easements that we will continue to have around the perimeter of the bigger lot that will be created, we'll be able to put the utilities in where we need to. So at this point, because it is vacating city property, the plant, or the city council hosts a hearing on vacations. So you need to set this one by resolution.
We need to set a date.
The twenty-fourth of February.
Twenty-fourth of February.
You just need to make a motion to set the.
Yep.
Public hearing for the twenty-fourth. Or to accept the resolution to set that.
Okay, then can I entertain a motion for setting the date for the public hearing for the vacation easement?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, motion's been made to set the public hearing for vacation easement for February twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passed. Next up, invitation to meet with Peoples Electric Co-op Board and Management.
Yes, so we, I had received an email actually initially asking about the January meeting that I would not be available, had been available for. So then the invitation came back, and so the council members and myself are invited to attend the lunches with Peoples Cooperative Service at their headquarters in, oh, what time? No.
Torino?
No, no, go, thank you. On February twenty-fifth at noon, that includes the lunch. So if you'll just get back to me with email and let me know if you're available, then I can RSVP to that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, mayor's report. I only have one thing, and it was, should've been done at the last meeting, was to appoint an acting mayor again each year. And I appoint Quaid Worstrom again for acting mayor. And then next up is administrator's report.
Yes, I did put the attorney policy back in the packet, and actually today we found out that we needed to get the updated version. So you'd had one on your table last time, and we didn't get that in the packet until just before the meeting today. But that's back in your packet. It looks just like the one that you reviewed at your last meeting.
Um, is there any discussion on that? I, to me, it looks good. I mean, I think we're kinda cutting some costs down the road, I think, from everybody calling the attorney.
Is this somewhere on a wait until we have a new attorney to see? Because she and some of the proposals, the attorney is coming to meetings, and some of them are actually supplying us with a report. I mean, there won't be much. He'll be, he or she that, you know, will be here quite a bit. If there's anything, it'll be, do we need to change it? Is what I was just wondering.
I think that's all good, but I still think we wanna have, you know, set it where, you know, limited people can call the attorney. I mean, we're still gonna have people having free, you know, we've had free reigns to call that attorney, and you can see what our attorney bill is. I just think we gotta kind of control that.
Yeah, that's always a little bit of all it is. I don't really have a problem with it. It's still got stated in there, you know, by law, there's really nothing to stop us from calling him, but this is gonna be more, a little bit more organized.
Okay, then can I entertain a motion on the attorney policy?
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the new attorney policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay?
Nay.
Motion passed. Communications policy.
I just brought this back in case you'd had a chance to read it over and add any comments. It is the current policy. That's in the employee handbook. I won't bring it back again unless there's a recommendation to tweak it or.
I think it looks good. I mean, everything in there looks great.
Okay.
Just needs to be followed.
All right, okay.
I think it's abused.
Yeah, I just wanted to say although it is the current policy.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
It's been put out there.
Yep. It's the current policy. And then you have in front of you the request, the responses to the request for proposals for city attorneys. I did put together a bid spreadsheet. I know Chuck came to review that with me.
Scratch.
The mayor and I talked a little bit about it. If you'd like to come visit me during the next couple of weeks, I'll be happy to walk you through that. And I do have copies of the full proposals available, either paper copies or by email. Joe Guzinski did review them, and I can share some comments with you too when we have an opportunity to discuss them.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we had been discussing, kind of on the periphery, the idea of providing some police administrative assistance. We're going to kind of test that out using, we have current staff. Krista is an administrative assistant, so you don't need to hire anyone. It doesn't require a hiring decision. And her position description does include special projects and the type of work that would be beneficial to the police department at this time. She would start with some training at the county to become familiar with software utilized at the police office. And then we would start with three hours for three days a week and see if that's helpful. And I've also asked her during that time to think about developing a position description so that as the city grows and if the position should grow, then we would have a really good handle on what it is that the police department needs for an administrative assistant. So it's kind of informal. It doesn't require any action on your part, just to kind of keep you up to date on what we're attempting.
Good.
Thank you. That's all good.
Is she gonna, a couple questions, sorry. Is she gonna be at the police station and set hours each day or?
Yes, we're gonna try from ten to two on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So then if Monday's a holiday, then it would just be Wednesday and Friday. We're gonna try to keep it consistent. We have also days where utility bills are due, and she's really needed in the office. So if that falls on a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, then she would miss that day at the police department that week. So we're just gonna try to be consistent and see if it makes a difference.
I talked to Candace, I talked to Candace today, and he was, he was pretty happy to start.
Okay, yeah, we'll give it a try.
Is she gonna still, let's say if nobody comes in, she would still be able to do work that she was gonna hear there?
Yes, we worked on having access to the service from, actually, she may be able to get access to service in both directions. So we will work on that potential.
I take it there's still a lunch break in there then, intended to? So, I, I take it there's still a lunch break in there, then, ten to two?
Well, no, I'm sorry. Ten to one, and her lunch would be till two. So, she would return here at two.
Okay.
On those days. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Then, you said three hours.
I did, I did.
I was thinking something like that.
I did, but the, but she'll actually be gone from here.
Because I thought it'd probably be helpful for them to have someone through the lunch.
Lunch hour, right, from twelve to one, and then one to two, she'll go to lunch, and then she'll come back.
Okay.
Okay.
What's, I got one, yep, made a couple. What's that do with your budget juggling?
It, it's actually already in the general fund budget. Some of her hours will get transferred to the police department, and so they'll, they'll have more of the expense, but it's already in the general fund budget to pay her wages.
Right, it was like, that's more just which funding you pay her, or.
It depends where she's, right, where she's at.
You're gonna juggle that.
Yeah. So, Ken was a little concerned, because he said, well, it looks like I'm over budget. And I'm like, it will. It will, because we don't know what it, what it'll look like yet to provide him with some assistance. But it's already included in the tax levy, all of her hours are in the general fund budget.
Those are gonna make it easier when we decide to go that way, if we go.
Right. Exactly.
And if she's driving back and forth, is there a city vehicle that she's taking from here down to there?
Uh, she could. She could.
Well.
Way too complicated.
Well, I should, I'm not actually, just I want to make sure it's clarified, because also we're gonna get mileage or whatever, right?
Well, not mileage so much, but what if someone with people that are in a rental vehicle, if you're down the block, you, you want her to be here.
I just want to.
And we actually do have.
Well, I thought we had.
We have a vehicle here.
Administrative.
Okay, that's it.
All right.
Um, let's see here, we're.
Memo of understanding. Mike, did you want to take it away?
Right. Ken, in the contract between City of Cassin and the Minnesota Public Employees Association, there's language in memorandum of understanding that call for a wage study to be done, or to be begun in January first, two thousand sixteen. Obviously, it wasn't started, and there's no money in the budget for this year to do it. In talking with Teresa, we agreed that October of two thousand seventeen would be a more efficient date to have that work completed, that they just write into, to new contract negotiations. So, we'll have the most current information available. Obviously, we're not going to do it in two thousand sixteen, so it makes sense to just rewrite the memorandum of understanding to reflect the new dates.
What, what's the cost for?
Well, we haven't even put it out, we haven't put out a request for proposals yet at this point.
So, the one in two thousand seven, two thousand six, it's still was twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Oh.
You don't know, speaking.
Isn't, I saw all those figures around the website. Can't we do that on our own?
Yeah, I, I seen the website.
Well, L N P does, right, does do a salary survey where they ask cities to participate by entering their salary and benefit information in the survey software.
This also has to follow a certain legal restrictions. It's part, it becomes part of the pay equity system, which means we, we look at job descriptions, we look at the job descriptions versus the state mandated points system. It, it's more complicated. The last one did take, what, two and a half years to complete?
That explains why it was twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Exactly. But like I said, there are state mandated restrictions as to how these things are done.
Okay.
Council work question. We're gonna come back maybe.
Does anybody, any problems on a Saturday morning, eight o'clock, like we did last year, for the public works?
Nope.
On the thirteenth.
I'm saying, how long's the date on the, I was just going with that, that's thirteen tomorrow.
Thirteen won't work.
No.
Well, then we're kind of moving out, isn't it?
Whatever works for the most people costs all the work.
Nancy's not available the twentieth.
What's the week before thirteen?
Six.
I'm gone.
You're gone?
Four, plus with sports, the playoffs coming up, I can be, just gonna have to plan out, maybe, no, we don't.
Well, we can wait till the end of, end of February, yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, let's, I want everybody to look their schedule over the twenty-seventh, and then we'll talk about it at the next meeting again.
Okay. Maybe just shoot me an email, let me know if you're available on it. Or let.
My, my daughter's having babies, I'm on her on that time, so.
Uh-oh.
I mean, I'll be there.
So, even the next week, might not even be a good one. Okay.
Grand pump it.
Okay, internet report.
Just before we leave this one, could we get a motion on the memorandum of understanding?
Oh, thank you.
I thought it was just discussion.
Uh, well, we would have to accept.
To amend the contract.
We're, yeah.
We're amending the contract?
To push it up to two thousand seventeen to two thousand sixteen.
Okay. All right, then can I entertain a motion then for the memo of understanding in Minnesota P E A for October first, two thousand seventeen?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made for the memo of the understanding with Minnesota P E A for October first, two thousand seventeen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passed.
Thank you, mayor and council. In your council packet is a purchase order from Ovivo for some equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. Tonight, we're requesting council action to authorize staff to enter in a purchase order with Ovivo for seventy-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. This equipment has been damaged and is planned to be replaced as part of the wastewater treatment plant improvements that are planned for later on this year. The equipment that I quoted is in the project budget. We did have it planned, and so within that budget number that we did have in our funding packages that we're putting together. The reason why we're ordering this equipment now and not keeping as part of that project is the lead time associated with that equipment. It's gonna take upwards of thirty-six weeks for the company to procure this equipment, manufacture the equipment, and send it to our site, wastewater, in this case, the wastewater treatment plant. Then in turn, when our construction is, is being participated in the treatment plant this fall, we would install that equipment at our contract or install. So, that's the reason why we're here tonight, to ask again for authorization to have a purchase order with the equipment manufacturer, Ovivo. So, with that said, to be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I know I talked to Charlie, the reason I talked to Charlie the other day, and the stuff is in bad shape, right?
Correct.
And it was like, is it like a five-year lifespan on it, and it's, we're on, how many years on?
Two thousand three, so thirteen years.
Thirteen years, he's just always constantly fixing things.
Correct. It's been on his list of things to fix. I guess there's large costs associated with it. With that said, we are gonna have a contractor on site doing a lot of other work at the wastewater treatment plant. So, if you're of any, that now is the time to do it. And even, we're gonna have a part of a funding package that Nancy and myself are putting together for the city. So, we look at rolling that cost in that funding package, so.
Oh, this is the only company that's gonna do that? I mean, is there any?
Correct. It's specialty equipment. It's part of a larger facility that is treating wastewater, so it's kind of proprietary equipment within that treatment process. So, there's a lot of chemical reactions going on. It's, it's a specialty equipment. So, it's nothing that you can go to the local hardware and can pick up, if you will, so.
So, how do we look at this? It's seventy-two grand to buy the new one. We gotta take one off, a rebuild, fifty-two grand. What do we do, look at it in a couple of years? Thinking about rebuilding the one you take out, or what?
Uh, no, that's not quite what we have going on. It may be a little confusing. I kind of Xed out the other options within the quotes. With the, the fifty-two grand was part of a rebuild for a gearbox only. So, what seventy-seven grand is gonna give us is a motor, a gearbox, and then a shaft underneath that gearbox.